All right. Welcome, everyone, to the City Council meeting for Monday, June 14, 2021. If we could have a roll call, Madam Clerk, to establish form.
Harry Meyer.
Present.
Alyssa Green.
Here.
Bill Ott.
Here.
Autumn Slane.
Here.
Laura Jo Smollet.
Here.
And Terry McClung is absent with notice. We have five.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Any corrections or any additions? We have one item I'd like to defer until next week, and that'd be Item Two. I believe our city attorney needs some more time to work on that ordinance.
That's correct.
Is that new business number two?
It's the only number two.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
And other than that, that's all. Hearing nothing else, will we get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
On favor, any discussion? On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Get a motion to approve the minutes for May 24?
So moved.
Second.
Any additions, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor of the minutes submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we do have a couple of vacancies. We've got a vacancy on the Planning Commission for anybody out there watching us or listening later on. Also have a vacancy on parks. So again, those are two items that citizens are interested, please put an application. We do have in your packet an application from David Carlisle for the hospital position number three. Yes, ma'am.
I flipped over his application, and gosh, I would like to go ahead since I think they kind of need help too.
They do need help.
To nominate him and pass him tonight, so I'll make a motion to nominate David Carlisle for position three for the hospital commission.
I'll second that.
Was that Ms. Slane?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any discussion? On favor of David Carlisle for position three on the hospital commission, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I will let Mr. Carlisle know and get him sworn in so he can start participating. That brings us to public comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
My name's Shaq Byrne, again. Last week, last meeting, I brought you a petition that dealt with the East Mountain Highway, but one part I didn't get to talk to you about is the intersection of Main Street, Flint Street, Douglas Street, Jackson Street, First Street, and four parking lots. There is no designation. Where does Douglas meet Flint? Is Douglas two lanes wide? Is it one lane wide? There is no street definition there, and there's no designation from parking lots to streets. We in our neighborhood request that to try to get resolved so that we know where the streets are and we know where the parking lots are. The first parking space, when you turn, that's right there for Main Street, that the city rents to Main Street, those parking spaces, needs to go away because when you come down Main Street and you try to turn into Flint Street, you cannot see who has stopped at Douglas Street. So if you would take that space away, people would have a chance to see who was actually at Douglas Street. And so the other intersection that needs to be dealt with is when you go up Flint Street and you come up to Steel Street. When you're going up Flint Street, there is no designation as to who has the right-of-way there. If you're coming from the lake, they have a stop, or Lake Eureka, they're coming, they have a stop sign there at Steel. If you're coming down the hill from the lookout, all it does is say "dangerous intersection." It does not say who has the right-of-way, and many people try to run straight through because you repaved and the pavement goes straight through. So consequently, there's no designation, and last year, the city did come out and paint a yellow stripe to try to indicate that coming up the hill, you have the right-of-way, but that yellow stripe lasts a month. You need some signage at that intersection so that we can all know what's going on. And I'm going to just report, there was two more accidents on East Mountain Highway this last weekend. There was a car at 3:00 in the morning, went up Flint Street, turned onto Steel, and lost control and hit a tree by Terry Weems's house. So this is the second time people are losing control going up the hill. First time was my house, and then on Jackson Street, right there where the pink and the greenhouse is, a lady parked there. Somebody ended up hitting her car and pushing it six inches, and it's in the middle of the night, and then no one knows who it's at. So we're having a problem with East Mountain Highway. So I would like to give more time if somebody would be willing to give me that.
During discussion? That's what he means.
Mostatory, a fair amount. I'd like to give you more time, but that's up to you. Just two comments. One, I still believe that we can put up all the speed bumps all over town, and it's just going to make it worse driving around here. They're so annoying, and people don't really slow down for them that much. I think the psychological speed bump of a nine mile an hour speed limit all over town will have a greater result, and so I'd like that to be considered seriously. Another point I've tried to make is that in looking at your budget, unless you've altered recently, last year's budget had allowed $10,000 for sidewalk maintenance, and then when the 2021 budget was approved, it had deleted that to zero on sidewalk maintenance. And looking at other places in the budget, there was somewhere, stand corrected if you can, $40,000 to $50,000 for the utilities and insurance on the auditorium, which could legally be paid by the CAPC, so I'd recommend moving that over to their budget and taking that $40,000 to $50,000 and whatever else you can find and put it into sidewalk maintenance. You can get these sidewalks repaired if you just make it a priority.
Hello. Dear council members, thank you for your time. I've written this statement in hopes that I can persuade you.
Would you please tell who you are and where you live?
Oh, yeah, I'm Sam Dudley. I live at 34 East Mountain Drive. Harry's my man. I've written this statement in hopes that I can persuade you and those here listening that our street, East Mountain Drive, is in dire need of both basic maintenance and some form of effective speed control, preferably in the form of speed tables such as those on Greenwood Hollow Road, and that these two issues can and should be addressed together. My family and I live at 34 East Mountain Drive, which is approximately halfway between Highway 62 and the lookout. Twice per day, my wife Katie takes our dog and two children on a stroll while I'm at work. While we love our neighbors and enjoy the benefits of living in town, these walks have always been harrowing for her. Can you imagine having your elderly dog on a leash, your two-and-a-half-year-old son in a stroller, and your four-month-old newborn strapped to your chest while you walk down a road with no shoulder, in which people often drive well over 30 miles an hour? Which Katie told me she was walking Saturday, and she said there's probably six or seven people who drove by her at 40 miles per hour. She doesn't have a radar gun, but it's a good estimate. So kind of a terrifying proposition. And this doesn't even address the blind corners, cracking road surfaces, and improper drainage issues that make it even more dangerous. As one of the most densely populated residential neighborhoods in the city, I would hope that these issues are on your radar. Each year, my family pays $1,400 in property taxes. Every day, we pay the 12.8% sales tax. Is that right? 12.8? Something like that. We do this because we love our town, but we also expect our town to return that love when possible. I believe we are currently at a crossroads in our town's development in which we must begin the process of investing heavily in infrastructure such as sidewalks, additional parks, crosswalks, and speed tables that will make it both safe and convenient to travel anywhere in the city without a car. But in the meantime, let's at least make sure no one gets run over. I implore you to please fund the speed tables. We desperately need to keep my family and my neighbors safe. Thank you.
What's up, David?
That concludes our public comments. If we would, that would bring us to our new business, get a motion to discuss the speed limits on high-traffic streets.
I make a motion.
Second.
All right, Mr. Meyer, you want to lead off?
Sure do. It looks like we have sufficient signatures on petitions to get speed bumps or speed tables on all these streets. So I'm hoping that, I know that Dwayne spoke with those folks up there with the speed cushions, and I'm really looking forward to hearing what he's found out from them and what we can, what he can do for us to install the proper speed control items. Can you ask Dwayne to come up?
Anybody else have any comments before we get Dwayne up here? Dwayne, you want to come up here and talk about a little bit about what we discussed
Yes, we looked at pricing on different products, and of course, the decision is, you know, how much do you put in and where do you put it? So that's, and like you said, petitions. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry. Yeah, it's, we looked at pricing, and you know, the question is how much, what extent do you go and where do you put them? You know, the process, the resolution is you can request them to put them in or remove them, and of course, that decision is then made by the city. You know, you can request them, and it doesn't automatically mean they're going to be installed. But so that's where we're at, and we talked, Mayor, perhaps moving ahead with some.
It's my understanding that the ordinance states if there's five residents along a stretch of street that sign a petition, they will get a speed table.
I don't believe that's true. We've been looking for that, and we couldn't find that.
Well, you're the one that told me.
We did it before, but I couldn't find that in the ordinance hearing. That's irrelevant at this point. The question is, what, Dwayne and I discussed was going ahead and putting possibly up four speed tables on East Mountain at a cost of approximately $3,000 each. Now, the question is where? Now, I know some people don't like the speed bumps, and you know, that was, I'm not sure if we want to take one of those speed bumps out, that we have one, and put a speed ramp there. That's right by your place, Mr. Meyer. Or if we want to install the speed ramps, two of them up on top on Echoes and through that area, and another two down on East Mountain and through there.
Well, I think we need to leave the speed bumps where they are, but perhaps something in front of Sam and Katie's house, for sure, and maybe something on Echoes, and maybe something on Council, and something on Hale Street.
That's what we were looking at and through there. And we'd also discuss too about signage, you know, trying to do, putting up some more signage in through there. That would give us at least four tables, and we'll see how that works. You know, it's kind of an experiment to see if that's going to work. We cannot do anything about people speeding at 3:00 in the morning, unfortunately, or have the accidents. People have accidents, you know, a lot around this town.
That's part of the 600 cars a day that take that route, for whatever reason. It's a shortcut from the bar because the police lay downtown instead of on that particular loop, and so.
Well, there's.
They take that route and throw the models out into the side of the street. I've seen it happen.
According to Mr. Cross, they also take up Mill Hollow Street.
Mill Hollow?
Yes. And that's another issue that needs to be addressed by another, other citizens, so. Mr. Ott?
Mayor, who's best qualified, or what, how do you determine where these are most needed, best place to put them in a prioritized list, then you can start knocking them out one at a time? Is that the, does the police give you input? Is it Public Works?
I think that the police department certainly has a lot of the input into that. We've, you know, I haven't, we've talked to Chief Young a little bit about seeing where, you know, some of the best locations, he thinks, but we haven't come up with specific items. Dwayne and I just talked about recently coming up with, let's try out two up on top around Echoes and then two on down on Hale area and see how that works.
Because I know that it's very good to get the input and the petitions from people that live on a certain street or in a certain neighborhood, but would there be other areas that are as needed of this as somewhere else? And I just don't know who would make that final determination with, and how would they would get the input for that?
They're needed all over town. And obviously, this, you know, squeaky wheel gets a grease, and what we've been hearing right now is the residents from East Mountain. What we'd like to look at, and I think Mrs. Smollet had talked about trying to do something out on Pivot Rock Road also, and we also looked at, you know, possibly trying to do something like more of a rumble strips or something, someplace where it won't bother the citizens with the noise, and Pivot Rock Road has that area.
Yeah.
And as far as the speed bumps versus the speed ramps or speed tables or whatever, it's been said that speed bumps are noisy. That's kind of like saying, I'm going to put out mousetraps to get rid of rodents in my house, but I can't stand the noise of the thing slapping closed. You know, you've really got to weigh one against the other, so I would hope that those people who are looking for some remedy that the city can do would give a sense of satisfaction in getting something done, even if it's not 100% of what they might want, but you know, half a solution is better than no solution at all as far as trying to deter people from speeding, so I'd hope that consideration would be taken under advisement, both by the citizenry in the areas and also the city.
Ms. Slane?
I would just like to say, I drove East Mountain, and Lower East Mountain has absolutely no signage as far as speed limits or anything in that area. I know as you get up to midway up, then you're starting to see a little more, but I think even just signage alone would be a huge help. I'm in agreeance with the, with the speed bumps or humps or whatever we decide, but I think signage would be huge because there's nothing, not one sign. And the one sign that was there was literally crooked. You couldn't even read it. So that's my two cents.
Mr. Meyer?
I think perhaps a three-way stop where Flint Street hits Steel Street and Hale Street there. You know, the place where the mirror is, a three-way stop would slow people down, and then maybe a rumble strip there at the very bottom of Flint Street, a rumble strip with a speed limit sign right there, just because they come flying off of 23 North and they think they can do 25, 30 miles an hour. And the speed bumps, certain cars have a suspension that they can just fly over them at, the bumps that we have, at 40 miles an hour, and it doesn't bother them a bit. Whereas the cushions, the tables, will launch them in the air if they hit them at 40. So that's, that's one of the reasons, and they're quieter. They really are quieter. If somebody goes over them at 15 miles an hour, you're not going to hear them. Somebody goes over the speed bumps at 15 miles an hour, you're going to hear them. You almost have to come to a complete stop on those bumps to keep from making any racket. And the company that makes those things has a formula for that sort of thing. I spoke to them on the phone a little bit. Dwayne did too. I don't know if, I didn't get any information on what they thought, but they look at it from an aerial photo and do something about that, but anyway. Our biggest problem is 600 cars a day, and more than half of them don't live in town, and they fly through there and they don't care.
Ms.?
Ms. Smollet? First, I'd like to say that I appreciate Chief Young's input and analysis of the problem. I agree with him on a lot of these issues. He did put the trailer with the speed display up in front of, conveniently up in front of my house. So every time I walk by a window, I looked out. Most people did slow down to over 25, but a surprising number of people were over 30, and one guy even after braking showed up as 34, and that was with substantial braking before he got to where it read. And just with the greenery, with the greenery all out this year, the bushes are thick, there are areas in which there are no more than 75 to 100 feet of vision, of sight, down the road. So unless people are going slow, and you can't get off the road at those spots either because the bushes and all are growing right up to the edge of the road, so even the pedestrian doesn't have anywhere to go to get out of the way of an oncoming vehicle. So please look at Pivot Rock.
Mr. Ott?
Mayor, I hope we're still considering, or at least will give consideration, to painting the speed limits in these areas that are so critical on the street themselves, because people are looking at the street, they aren't always looking out at the signs. And the only thing I have to go by that by that I know that it kind of works is that when they painted "do not enter" on the end of Pine Street, we've had a lot less traffic of people going up the wrong way because it was on the street, and they saw it rather than being able to see the signs up here.
I love that.
Chief Young?
I think there's a couple of things here. One is your comments about, you know, the signage and also possible that whether it's on the roads or vertical or.
Which part were you talking about? I'm sorry.
Well, Mr. Ott's talking about painting the speed limits on the highway, on the road, you know, whether that's, of course, I'm afraid we may end up with the same thing like the lines, it may not stay there longer than, you know, a month or two. I don't know.
Nothing lasts forever, but you know, the "do not enter" gets painted once a year on Pine Street, and it works.
Exactly. Why are the, why are the strips not lasting that long? Is it a different person or a different paint or?
More traffic.
I don't know. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, depends on the type of rumble strips. I mean, some rumble strips are mounted on top of them, and some of them are cut into the asphalt, so it just depends on the type of it that it is. Obviously, the ones that are cut into the asphalt don't really wear out that much unless the asphalt wears down. The other ones, if they're, whether they're concrete or rubber or whatever, I mean, they're going to wear down over time. It's just like, you know, the painting on there with the, some people watch the road, especially as being officers, we see this all the time. Some people pay a lot of attention to the road, some people notice the signs up here rather than they do on the road. Just depends on the person. You know, we all know that for a fact. I mean, we drive out here every day, and we know exactly the type of people that we're dealing with here. But same thing, or just like I said, I mean, the, whether it's more signage, whether it's painted or posted signs, it's definitely not going to hurt by any means, by any means. And I agree with Ms. Slane completely about signage, especially down on Echoes. There definitely needs to be more signage down on Echoes.
We don't even have a street sign on Echoes. Nobody knows it's Echo Street.
I didn't know it was Echo Street.
But as far as, kind of like I wrote in my little letter to y'all about the speeders and everything, like I talked to y'all about before, was kind of surprised a lot of people when they think about the number of officers and the number of officers, you know, within certain jobs, that, you know, there's only so many of them that actually work the street like that. And they're doing everything they can. I mean, we got dealing with, you know, high numbers this year, we got tons and tons of calls, and they're still out making stops, everything that they can. And whenever it comes to the radar trailers, it's one of the things that we're working on with that grant that we're already working on now. We did get more radar units for cars, and we got two of three in, which the state is basically reimbursing all the money for that, so. And then for next year, if we get the same grant next year, and that's one of the things that we're going to ask for is another trailer, and.
The trailers work to a point. They do help.
They, and then, and they're mobile, and they can get moved around. Let's say right now, we're working with one, and of course, you pull one, then you have to wait another day, what, and it sits there and charges up before you can go put it back out again. And then after about three days, same thing, you got to keep moving around and charging it. But you know, if we were to get another one, which would be, you know, hopefully at no cost to us anyway on that, we could get it done. With, you know, doing some more checking, like I put in, as far as the camera trailers, reading some different articles and everything throughout, throughout the state and throughout nationwide for that matter, a lot of them are getting thrown out because how radar works, and you know, Mr. Weaver can support this. Radar works is a tool to support the officer. The officer is the one that has to see it speeding first. The radar is just used to confirm what the officer already sees. So whenever you have a camera just doing that, you take the officer completely out, and then a lot of laws, even on the law in Arkansas, there's no officer to witness it. So therefore, a lot of them are kicking that stuff out. And that would be, you know, you could basically get two radar trailers for the price of one camera trailer. So it's kind of a costly thing to take a chance on it.
I appreciate you guys being out this weekend. I saw a ton of you out, so thank you. It was busy.
Yes, yes. We've got a lot of our schedules and everything worked right now, even though we're, we've got, our position's filled right now with the call volume and everything, it runs everyone pretty thin. And they're out working, and they're busy. They're busy.
Mr. Meyer?
I've watched the traffic a lot, and even though they do speed on Flint and Steel and Hale and Council, but when they get around that corner onto Echoes where the street is wider, they push it, their pedal down, you know? And then when they get around to East Mountain, and it seems to be a little wider and more shoulder, then they go even faster. And like I said, we can't completely stop that, but at that point, a sidewalk would help pedestrians considerably from there on out to the highway. And there is easement. You know, everybody's property line ends before eight, 10, 12 feet from the, from the street, so there's room to build a sidewalk on city property. That's something we can do on down in the future, but right now.
Dwayne and I have discussed the sidewalks up there on East Mountain, and I've had, some of the citizens love it, and some of them don't want it. Some of them like to walk in the street, believe it or not.
They could take their life in their own hands.
I agree.
I know most of the regular walkers want a sidewalk.
So how many speed bumps are on East Mountain currently? Do we? Do we, do we?
Just two.
Two? And is that upper east, correct?
It's the upper.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what we're proposing is putting four.
Four.
Four more.
Actually, speed ramps up there instead of the bumps.
Where at?
Well, that's, we're going to have to decide that with Chief Young and, and see where we think the best part, best place is and through there.
And I hope you consider the stop signs at...
The what?
Stop signs at Echoes and Steel and Hale.
Mayor, do you have a, I'm sorry, do you have a timetable kind of set up for when you want to have this accomplished by?
No, because we just started talking about it, Mr. Ott. So we haven't decided, you know, when we can be able to get it accomplished. But, you know, it's something that we are, we're talking about with the department heads at this point.
Okay.
So, you know, I'll certainly keep Council informed and you'll, you'll notice it as soon as we get them in anyway. So, yeah.
I just thought that the, the people who are most concerned would feel better if we're saying, yes, we're working on it, we're tentatively shooting for July 1, July 15, August 1.
I hate to put a timeline on it, then if I don't get it accomplished, then I'll get accused of not getting it done. So all I can say is we're going to do it as soon as possible.
Uneasy lies the head that wears the crown. I'm sorry.
Any other comments and questions? All right. If not, we'll move on to our item number three. We can get a motion to discuss the minimum wage for city employees.
So move?
Second.
All right. Ms. Smalley?
This year, it, it seems that our sales tax returns are going up. And I think the city might be in a very good position to start paying a minimum living wage to its employees. It only affects about a dozen people, but I would really like to see the city develop a policy that wages begin at $15 an hour, which is really what a lot of groups, including, oh gosh, I can't remember the name of it, the poverty group. That's what it really takes basically to make your, a living, pay your rent, a small car payment, groceries. And I think that really we shouldn't be expecting city employees to have to take a second job just to get by. I don't know how many of them do or not, or who have situations where there's other incomes coming into their households. But I feel strongly that it's also just a matter of recognizing the value of our employees. And other cities in our area pay at least that, if not more. So we do lose employees. They get a few certifications and then they're off working for another town. So I would like to see, as we do our mid-year budget adjustments, to take that up and make some real strides towards getting fair and equitable pay.
Oh, I agree. I'm not disagreeing at all and we've talked about that, especially with Public Works, trying to get those salaries increased. Of course, whenever we do bump those up, we also ended up bumping the people also up.
I understand that.
You know, so it's not just a few, I mean...
Right, right. It's going to be a job to get it all fair all the way around, but it's something that I feel, we are so out in the front of taking care of people's rights and acknowledging the value of all types of different people. We've got to take care of our employees.
I agree. Ms. Green?
I was, I'm kind of on something else, but I was reading then, it really goes with this. In America, there is only one metropolis and a few counties where a person making minimum wage cannot afford a one-bedroom apartment. So I think about our people here and I agree. I, I think we need to start looking at their wages and incentives because we have some great employees and, and we want to keep them. So, you know, having them work at, at such low wages, I don't even know where they can live.
Not around here.
Mr. Ott?
Mayor, who will be working on this? Who will be deciding? Because I, when you mention it...
The Public Works and Public, I mean, the Finance Director and myself will be coming up with, and all the department heads.
Because it's going to take a while to do, as you mentioned, because that's what I was going to mention about the ripple up effect. If you raise the bottom, you got to raise another, another, another. So it'll be, there'll be equity in, in the pay scales. So, but is that, is that an ongoing between you and the Finance Director to come up with that? Is that how that works?
Exactly. I mean, we're getting ready to start. We're trying, we won't know a lot of our projections or where we are with our mid-year budget until actually the end of June. When we get those. And then there'll be another month or two before we get the real projections in there. But, you know, we're trying to get from the department heads their revised mid-year budget request at this point.
Okay.
Ms. Slane?
Do we know how many people are making less than $15 an hour?
Not off the top of my head, I don't.
Okay. Do you know?
Well, we've, we, the, the state passed a minimum wage increase, a dollar a year for the last couple of years and, and how much has that affected the payroll?
Mr. Clark isn't here at this point, but he could tell you.
I don't think it was much because I know when I, when we talked about this once before, crunched the numbers and it was like $20,000 as far as...
I think it's, I think it's quite a bit more than that. But I, you know, I may be mistaken.
But our Public Works pays less than any of the Public Works departments in this county of Carroll. And so, you know, we get a guy trained, he goes to Holiday Island. We get a guy trained, he goes to Berryville. It's just, it makes good sense to treat them well and, and to pay them a living wage, or at least a competitive wage with the rest of the county. We can't, we can't keep them if we don't pay them. That's why they work. And, you know, water sewer, water sewer has to, the revenue has to be what? 120% of what, of what we bring in? So the wages of those employees of water and sewer, if we raise them, we can raise the rates a little bit and it would be pennies on people's water sewer bills. That's one place that we can find the money for sure. Everybody still has to flush their toilet. And, yeah, I just, a friend of mine does, does taxes for people down in New Orleans. And this year, with the increased unemployment, so that it basically was $15 an hour, she had all these black, black women coming in to get their taxes done and they had their nails done, their hair was pretty, they had some fairly decent clothing, and they were happy. They were back to work and they were happy. And of course, wages went up in New Orleans. Wages are going up in Eureka Springs, too. I know one tavern owner that is paying $15 to $18 an hour and he keeps his employees. So I think it's time. It's just like infrastructure.
All right. Any other comments? Well, as I said, this is something we are, and I've been encouraging Public Works to, Dwayne, to start looking at that and giving me some figures so we can come up with our mid-year budget when we get that. So we'll be looking forward to seeing where we are. Any other comments? All right. Well, that concludes our business for tonight, brings us to agenda sitting. Ms. Green?
Could we put a discussion of what Jack wanted, that, that area? It probably fits in with the, the speed bumps with better signage and some, some striping, but could we put a small discussion on?
On for?
A discussion of the Flint Street Douglas intersection.
We can put it on there. It's almost an impossible solution into there. I mean, I'm sure Jack seems to have a solution for it, but I'm not sure that there is a real, that we can have a discussion for sure. All right. Anybody else? All right. Council comments. Mr. Ott?
Not much, except that I look forward to seeing all my colleagues invisibly online Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday for the Arkansas Municipal League Summer Online Conference. The only nice thing about this is you can go in your pajamas. Thank you.
Ms. Smalley?
I'm really pleased to see this council tackling some genuine substantive issues and how we're doing it in such a respectful manner and well researched and it makes me very proud to be on the council. Thank you.
Ms. Green?
I did a Laura Joe and these are times that things have really are changing and I agree with her. This council is starting to address them and they're kind of a multitude of things that we no longer, you know, we, we have to tackle them. And it's, it's a new world and I'm proud of this council.
Mr. Meyer?
Well, I'm proud of our little town. It has come back from COVID and people are optimistic and this is good. We'll always have some controversy, but if, if that ends, we're probably all dead.
Ms. Slane?
I have no comments.
The only thing I have is I would like to encourage everybody that's listening. I know the city council have all had their vaccinations for the COVID. I'm very disappointed in the, with what I'm reading and seeing in the state. I'm not sure we really have a percentage in Eureka Springs, but they say, you know, we're around 30 something percent, people who have had both COVID vaccinations and 40, over 40% have only had one. Well, and the reverse of that is that means that seven out of 10 people have not had their vaccinations, had not have their complete, both vaccinations. And that's with this summer coming in and this fall, I think it's important, we're getting, we're going to start, at the end of this month, we'll be losing our mask, which is, everybody's going to be glad, I'm going to be glad. We're going back to normal. We're starting to see some events going to be occurring in Eureka. We're going to see some music in the park coming up. We've got a lot of people applying for events. But I really encourage all the citizens to please, please go out and get vaccinated. It's not only to protect yourself, but it's to protect your neighbors and other people that come into this area and through there.
Question? Point of inquiry, if, if someone wants to get, to get vaccinated, and since the publicity on us kind of died down, where, who would they call or who would they contact to find out where they could?
Eureka Springs Hospital can still give vaccination shots.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And in fact, this last weekend, the Mustang Car Show, they were giving vaccination shots up there at the car show and there was quite a few people getting shots at that point. So, anyway, if I take a motion to adjourn?
So move?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.